I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Bardstown Independent School District. If everyone can stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the special called meeting on August 20th and the regular meeting on August 21st. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes from the special called meeting and the regular minute meeting state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. The next item is the confirmation and approval of claims.
Regarding the September 2018 claims that are before you for approval today, the total is $703,232.97. Of that amount, Fund One total is $336,622.91. Last year at this time, we paid just over $309,000. So that's a difference of $27,507. That can be attributed to primarily that we purchased a van of approximately $42,000 from Superior Van. That was a wheelchair accessible van. I believe we've discussed that with you all before, in order to transport our vocal rehab students out to job sites. So that was actually paid for with Medicaid reimbursable funding. And then also, there was a timing of payment of about $55,000 for insurance to Liberty Mutual. In Fund 400, our debt service, that total for this period is $43,340.95. That paid for three bond series for the principal and interest, primarily interest. It was just principal for one of the series. Do you all have any questions about the claims before you today?
There was one thing I've already got Tracy to take care of and answer. There was an expense for $27,796.00 for general supplies, and I found out that was for paper for the year. So divided over whatever it is, it's not made.
Do I have a motion for approval of claims? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the claims state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the financial report.
You have the documents before you today for the financial reporting of the Bardstown Independent School District. I'd like to go over the treasures report with you. There is a verified cash balance of $2,108,103.52. That is verified by our bank statement and then also by our balance sheet. You'll see in that second area at the bottom there of the page, you see our debt service is over $802,000. If you recall, that's because we wait until we receive our tax income, and we make a transfer from Fund One to Fund 400 to cover that. So the remainder outside of our debt service payments from our tax revenue will be housed in Fund 320. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then also, the overage that you see in food services, just a timing of expenditures and revenue for this time of year. And then I just have a few things to mention to you today regarding the district finances. To follow up on the changeover of the fifth third commercial card from American Express, we've successfully processed the ACI transfers to our vendors with the new system. The vendors are now receiving an encrypted email with a one-time number for processing a specific approved amount, and that's good for just 30 days. After this initial setup, all the processing is going quite smooth. And then also, for an update on the fiscal year 2018 audit, the district audit started yesterday, so Jason Strange is in our office conducting fieldwork, and we hope to have all that work concluded by Friday, October 5th, so that you'll have the final audit and financial statements for your review at the October meeting. So so far, two days in, we're on track to meet that timeline. And then finally, we're also on track to issue our tax bills on Monday, October 1st. As you're aware, Ms. Sheila Music has resigned and taken a position in her residing district in Hardin County, but we have a solid replacement for our tax collection manager, and that's Mrs. Marcia Sanders, who was the former Bardstown Elementary School bookkeeper. Marcia has a 19-year career in school finance, and so I'm quite confident in her abilities to perform this important task for our district. And that's all I have for you today.
All right, our next item is the superintendent report.
It is my pleasure to introduce some students that were chosen as young leaders for the Young Leaders Institute, which is sponsored by the Bardstown Nelson County Chamber of Commerce. I don't want to say too much, because you all might want to share just a little bit about what this is, and maybe just a few comments about what you expect to learn. So Mr. Hayes, did you want to share just a little bit about it?
Yeah, it started in the mid-'90s. I saw it through Kim this morning. And basically, what it is, is it's a program that shows the kids exactly what Bardstown offers, so when they get out of college, they'll come back to Bardstown. So we do it economically, we do some agriculture, and they can go with the other three schools, all schools are involved, and they kind of bond a little bit at the end of the season, too. They become good friends. And so it is not such a rivalry between the schools as much as a correlation with the business model. But I may have Sophia talk a little bit about it. And Will.
Good afternoon. My name is Sophia Downs. On behalf of all of us, we would like to say thank you for the opportunity to represent Bardstown High School and the Nelson County Chamber of Commerce Young Leaders Program. We look forward to the chance to meet and work with other leaders from our community and surrounding high schools.
Hello. My name is Will Rapier. We feel honored to be a part of this program. Through this program, we look forward to meeting new people and sharpening our leadership skills. We are very excited for what's ahead of us and becoming the best young leader to come through Bardstown High School. Thank you.
So just to give you a little bit more information, this is a competitive process. There are 30 students chosen across the county, so all the area high schools have the opportunity to submit applications and choose individuals. We were honored to have eight identified from Bardstown High School. I spoke with a representative from our local chamber, and their comments were, they are always so thrilled to get Bardstown High School students, and how involved they are, how inquisitive they are, how much they want to learn, and they certainly contribute to the process. So there's no doubt in my mind that these sophomores will carry on that tradition, and I'm really proud of you guys. It's a great honor. So congratulations. You'll notice their names on the marquee in front of the high school, and they certainly have a lot to celebrate. So, great job. You guys can stick around, or you can head back to class. It is up to you. It's up to Mr. Hayes. That concludes the superintendent's report.
The next item is recognition of visitors. I don't think we have any. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the memorandum of understanding between the Bardstown Police Department for the school resource officer.
Well, as you know, as the board knows, this is something I have been hard at work on since really late June, definitely working during through the month of July in the last couple of months. Working closely with our mayor and with our chief, Kim Kressig. I am thrilled that we have reached an agreement that we think is going to really serve our students and school community, and for the first time ever, have a school resource officer on Bardstown City Schools campus. We anticipate that'll just be one officer, and we have a unique setup where a person could service three schools on this campus, and just with a short drive, arrive at our other schools less than a mile away. So it really is a unique opportunity, and we're excited about it. I didn't know if Chief Kressig, if you wanted to share any comments, just saying, you know, about our work, and I know we're both excited about it.
Yes, I think this is, just to introduce myself, I'm Kim Kressig. I'm the chief of Bardstown Police Department, and we just are really excited about this opportunity to have an officer in the school system. I think in 2018, I think having this partnership is a great, this is where we need to be. And this is great for the community in the city of Bardstown. And so working with Mr. Clark has been just a great partnership, and we really look forward to this opportunity moving forward. And just if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
I'll add just a couple of comments. You guys may have questions if you...
I have just a little bit of one. I mean, are the, our resource officer, is he going to be on full-time on the city's payroll? Are we, how we manage this?
So it is a shared fiscal responsibility. So basically, looked at the cost of an officer through the course of a calendar year. They'll be on our campus every day that students are in school, and then in addition to that, some training days as well.
Okay. I assume the officers will be carrying weapons?
Yes, they'll be in uniform. Yes, they'll be sworn officers, and they'll have a marked car. They'll be in uniform daily.
Is the process to roam the halls, or be available, or what? I mean, kind of like just on the beach, or go walk around and see what's going on?
So they're going to serve lots of roles, definitely being visible and giving that security presence, I think that's very, very important. This person would be on the move regularly. It's likely that their office area will be on this campus, and we're still sorting that out. But in addition to that, the things that, to me, I'm the most excited about, and I think the chief and the mayor are too, is the opportunity for this person to develop strong, lasting relationships with the kids.
Sure.
I think that's going to be just very impactful for not just Bardstown City Schools, but for our whole community. There are also, over time, maybe some instructional responsibilities. We may look at different programming and things like that, that this person might get some training on and get into classrooms some. So, you know, it's definitely being a presence, it's working hard to develop those relationships, and that instructional opportunity as well.
It's actually been rather difficult at one point or two to incorporate the responsibility of teachers and our ability to manage discipline children versus the police officers being able to do something that's not necessarily criminal, but there's going to be some overlapping.
So there'll be some learning, but it's going to be made very clear that this person is a peace officer, they're executing and enforcing the law. So the day-to-day operations of the school still falls on the responsibility of the principal, assistant principal, guidance office, and classroom teacher, of course. So as far as, you know, classroom management and those sorts of things, those are still 100% school responsibilities. And we'll make sure that we communicate and make that very, very clear.
Right, I think it's important that, you know, the school resource officer, not only are they there as law enforcement, but they're there as an advisor for students and a mentor and educator also. But there is, like Mr. Clark said, they're not there to enforce administrative roles. They're there for enforcement, for criminal enforcement there, but they're also there as mentors to kids and for community outreach, and to have those relationships with the students in the classrooms. And so building those relationships, I think, are very important, and that's something that they'll be able to do and have that outreach in the school system.
I have a question. Will they have a special training in safe physical management?
They will have training. They will definitely go to additional training to be a school resource officer. Yes, ma'am.
I think it should be emphasized that the officer is there for their safety primarily.
Absolutely.
And, you know, for the other reasons to take care of situations that get out of hand, but you all will be there for their safety.
Absolutely. And I think when you have an officer in the schools, I think that does really provide and makes parents and students have that sense of safety, that an officer is there on-site, on-campus with students.
One of the stupidest things I ever heard was putting guns in teachers' hands in the classroom. That was completely ridiculous.
Yeah, so with this presence, that'll be something that, you know, will hopefully set people's minds, knowing that there's someone that's highly trained to handle any situation they might encounter. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The memorandum, of course, is in your pocket of information, if you've had an opportunity to look at that.
So, this may be a stupid question, but I'll go ahead and ask it anyway. So is a memorandum a legal document? It is.
Yes.
Yes. So it's like a contract, except it's just called a memorandum.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. So do I have a motion for approval for the memorandum of understanding between the Bardstown Police Department and the school resource, or the school resource officer?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Okay, then all those in favor of approval of the memorandum of understanding state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the KSBA Administrative Procedure Service.
So recently, I shared with the board an opportunity to subscribe, not only to the policy service through KSBA, but also the procedure service. There, you know, some questions were shared with me about certain procedures that would accompany a different policy. And so as I learned about that and started to research different procedures for a specific policy, the KSBA alone has that service. I'm excited about subscribing to this. It's definitely an investment on the front end, and the procedure is that the KSBA will review every single one of our policies on the books. They will then put together a draft of procedures that they would recommend for the different policies where those are needed. It would not be needed for every policy. There would be a process where we would look at what they have offered. We'd be able to get feedback. We get to alter different procedures depending on what best fits our needs. And then ultimately, we have a procedure in place for any policy where it was appropriate. It could be looked up on the web, just like our policies are. And every year, after that initial investment of them doing a lot of research and developing the procedure manual, just like we do the policies, they would review procedures and recommend different procedures that would happen to be appropriate in that given year. So it would just be an ongoing service. That would be a lot less expensive than that initial search that they would have to do. But I think it's a good step to take, and I think that it's something that, based on just some of the feedback that some of you all have shared, it's something we need to look at, and I think it's going to just help us better provide service and make sure that we have a plan for enforcing policy.
How does this go along with what Mr. Bowling does, going through the procedures and additions and deletions? Does this take that place, or is this just...
So this is an addition. So what would happen after, like I said, the heavy lifting and the work on the front end, developing the manual for all of our policies, again, not every policy is going to have a procedure, but developing our procedure manual, that's going to be pretty intense. I mean, there's going to be a lot of work and a lot of back and forth. Once that gets set, then every single year, just like Mr. Bowling provided, these are policies that are recommended changes. In addition to that, these are also procedures that are recommended by law or recommended policy change or procedure changes. So it would be an addition. It would not be, it would not be the same thing. It is an additional service that they would provide.
Thank you.
Sir.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the contract with KSBA Administrative Procedure Service?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the contract with the KSBA for the Administrative Procedure Service, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the fiscal year 2000 working budget.
So Ms. Rogers is going to review our working budget for us.
The fiscal year 19 working budget total for all funds is $37,152,54. The Fund One total is $29,396,067. So just to give you some highlights on the revenue side and then also the expenditure side, I'll start with the revenue side first. At this time, the beginning balance is approximately $2.8 million. That is specific to Fund One, and that's subject to change with the final audit of the 17-18 annual financial report. This budget's been updated with the latest projections for state revenue and SEAC and our other grants. And then the final federal audit grant allocations are still pending, but there's no substantial changes to programming or staff over the last fiscal year. This budget also is likely to change when the final SEAC award is issued, and that comes out towards the end of September. For budgeting purposes, conservative SEAC revenue of $9,139,446 has been used in anticipation of forthcoming adjustments for the prior end-of-year ADA. Revenue for property tax includes a 4% increase in revenue over fiscal year 2018, and using prior year returns as an estimate, the tax revenue is projected at a total of just under $8.5 million. No capital fund request transfers from Fund 310 or 320 are included in the general fund budget. However, $665,931 is available when we combine the balance in Fund 320 after our debt service payments with the capital outlay funding in Fund 310. And at this time, we intend to reserve these funds for future construction costs and then also unintended facility needs that may arise. On the expenditure side, the most recent debt service schedules for outstanding bond and KISTA obligations are included in the budget. That's in Fund One. And then budget also includes a step increase to salary schedules. Salary and benefits account for 84% of the total budget for all funds combined. As previously discussed by Dr. Clark in his tax presentation, funding is budgeted for anticipated technology upgrades, school safety costs, as well as repairs to our HVAC system at the middle school, and roofing for the elementary and the board office. Our contingency is $1.2 million. That's in the general fund, which is right at 6%. Overall, this is a very healthy budget with an eye toward planning for future construction while meeting some immediate needs to maintain and upgrade our current facilities, as well as expand in essential areas of technology and school safety. So do you all have any questions about the working budget that I may answer for you?
No? Okay, good. We don't have a clear plan on the tech, how the technology, yet.
No. Appreciate that question. No, because committee work is needed, and that committee is being formed, and the scope of that committee is also being defined.
Okay.
So we're not doing, planning any expenditures until that committee is up and running and making that decision.
Okay. Do I have motion for approval of the fiscal year 2019 working budget?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in approval of the fiscal year 2019 working budget state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the Certified Evaluation Appeals Panel Appointment.
Mr. Bowling is going to just share a little bit about that.
Just very quickly, you all know that we have two certified members on the Certified Employee Evaluation Appeals Panel, and the way we do that, it is a two-year term, and so we have one person that rotates off each year. So this year, Ken Hardeman is staying on to do one more year. Laura Montgomery has rotated off, has completed her two years. So we did a, went through a procedure, a ballot process, and we have a teacher from the primary school, Ms. Mary Boston, was elected for this year, so she will be coming on to start a two-year stint. Mr. Hardeman will rotate off next year, and we will do a similar election process to replace him.
And this was an election process?
It is. You have to do it prior to September 1st, per policy, and we do a process to nomination, there's nominations, and then we do a ballot process for all certified members in the district, and then there's a vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do I have a motion for approval of the Certified Evaluation Appeals Panel Appointment?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the Certified Evaluation Appeals Panel Appointment, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the emergency certification for the Bardstown Middle School science teacher.
I'll share some comments here. This is a unique situation. So at the end of last school year, Bardstown Middle School advertised for a new science teacher. There are very few, unfortunately, very few certified science teachers at the secondary level. So we were, however, very fortunate, the middle school was very fortunate, to find Ms. Kiata Harmon, who is, has a bachelor's degree in biology and chemistry. She's definitely strong in the area of science, and learned that she was very excited about becoming a teacher. So she has started classes, and is, are those at, where are those classes? Is that Cumberland, University of Cumberland?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, which is, thank you for mentioning that. So through the University of Cumberland, she has an opportunity to be awarded an Option Six certification, which would make her a fully certified science teacher. She, however, has to pass, take and pass the praxis test, which she's not scheduled to take until October. Fully confident she's going to be successful passing that assessment, but in the meantime, we have reporting that we need to do as a district that says we have certified staff in place. So it is fully within the board's purview to award emergency certification, and I feel like we need to do that and feel comfortable with that, because I think it's going to be a short-term certification, the emergency part, because very soon, she's going to be certified through the Option Six path, through the University of the Cumberland's. But this is just to make sure that we are compliant and have certified teachers in the classroom. So asking for you to consider emergency certification of Ms. Kiata Harmon as the Bardstown Middle School science teacher.
So what is the timeline? You said very soon. Is that October?
Yeah, her test is in October. Then there's, of course, paperwork that has to pass. It was hard for anybody to tell me exactly when everything would, you know, when she passes that test and when all that paperwork would pass the hands at the Education Professional Standards Board and all of that. So it may be late November, even December, by the time all the paperwork passes, and it just put us in a tough...
it just put us in a tough situation. So, I'm very comfortable with the emergency certification under this circumstance.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the emergency certification?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. And a second? Yes?
Yes.
First second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
[laughing]
No? All right. Well, then, all those in favor of approval of the emergency certification for the Barstown Middle School Science Teacher, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the Cumberland Family Medical Service for the Health Clinic.
So, as you remember from our August meeting, we had Cumberland Family Medical identified as our partner for our health clinic. So, that, we started, we engaged then in developing the contract after that approval. So, that contract is in your board materials and would need a motion to approve the contract, and of course, then signatures would follow. Been in touch with them. It's been a long process, but a very collaborative process developing the contract. Feel very comfortable with the services they can offer and excited about this partnership.
All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the contract for Cumberland Family Medical to service the Health Clinic?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? I think it's a great thing.
Yes, pretty much so.
All those in favor of the contract for the Cumberland Family Medical, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the agreement with the court for athletic training services.
So, very, very similar situation. As you might recall, in August, approved the partnership with court to provide athletic training services. So, immediately after that, went to work on the contract, and again, a very collaborative process. Very excited about this partnership. It needs your approval on our contract with court.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agreement with court for athletic training services?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Another great thing.
Yes, it is.
This is what we've been working on. All those in favor of approval of the agreement with court for athletic training services, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the memorandum of agreement with ECTC for dual credit.
Mr. Beck, I'll invite him up to explain this.
What you have in your packet is a dual credit agreement with ECTC that we're entering into to offer dual credit courses to our students at Barstown High School. The language is pretty well boilerplate that explains that students must be accepted to ECTC on that consideration. The only addition that we added was the ability to add ninth and 10th graders. The normal agreement covers 11th, 12th graders. There are certain exceptions that we would like to have the ability to offer that to specific situations for ninth and 10th graders instead of just 11th and 12th graders. That was the only change that we had, other than that. Are there any questions about the agreement?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You added ninth and 10th graders.
Yes, ma'am.
So, is that for VoTEC primarily?
No, ma'am. There are certain situations where we have students of acceleration, advanced grade class. So, we wanted to make sure they also had the ability, if they were ready in the ninth grade, to go ahead and take some of those introductory courses.
Because I saw, you know, VoTEC courses.
Yeah, and we do offer several dual credit courses through our local ATC already.
All right.
And this is just one of the universities we'll be working with. We also work with Western Kentucky, Murray State, our local ATC, and we actually have a meeting Wednesday to bring University of Louisville into a fold to add an additional pathway. Just for reference, we have about 12 AP courses and about 16 dual credit courses that we offer, which would be roughly about 84 available college hours that students have in front of them.
So, can you briefly tell me the process on that? Is it the counselor's role to identify, or the teacher counselor role to identify?
For dual credit, it would be their role to identify the pathway that students would enter. It would be the student's role to get accepted to that college or university. Each one has a different process by which they go through. ECTC is one of the more streamlined ones, and it's also the one that we use the most. They would apply for that. With dual credit, the fee would be, by law, it has to be 1/3 of whatever their tuition rate is already. So, we're looking at about $160 for students to receive dual credit. If they use AP, it's about $94. Okay.
I just wonder sometimes if families and students know that that's available. I guess that's my question.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's a school-wide program, and that's through the counselors, and we do that mainly during scheduling ahead of time. It's not something we generally do throughout the year, choices that are made. It's as we build the schedule for the upcoming year, what we have available. And each year, for the past four years, we've broadened the scope of dual credit that's available, and we will definitely continue to do that to give more opportunities for students, whether they choose to go to Campbellsville or University of Louisville.
Thank you.
Is this open only to students that take AP classes and pass the test?
No, that's a very good question. Those are two different things. The AP courses do offer college credit if they pass the AP test and receive a score of three or higher. What we're looking at for this particular agreement is just dual credit, meaning the student is going to get a high school credit and a college credit if they pass the course. That's the dual credit nature of it.
And if they're accepted by a university?
And the credit goes to that university. So, if it's a dual credit course to ECTC, they would have that credit to ECTC. The vast majority of those can then transfer to other universities if they choose to go to. AP, on the other hand, is different. They give credit to any of the state universities in Kentucky, so there's a little bit more leeway in the transfer of it. But generally, students take intro courses in dual credit, so if they're taking an intro to writing or an intro to mathematics at ECTC, it transfers very easily to Western Kentucky or University of Kentucky or U of L, wherever they decide to go to. And sometimes, we have students that are very specific, that they know they're going to go to a specific college, and we try to make dual credit happen just for that individual student. We've had that situation before, where it's not something we'd normally open up, but trying to meet the needs of each individual student, we have opened that up before.
Would the work-ready program pay for some of that?
There is a dual credit scholarship program in the state of Kentucky that would pay for some of that. Yes, ma'am. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Can I ask our students if they knew that the dual credit was available? I just, yes, no, you knew it. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Just make it your...
And these guys are sophomores, too.
Right. They're sophomores. They're a little young.
Not, even though in that agreement, freshmen and sophomores could. But I think typically, if I'm not misstating, that typically, a junior and a senior are going to be more, even more in tune with those opportunities.
I know four of them personally, and they're troublemakers.
Just wanted to make sure they were still waiting.
Don't point them out.
Thank you.
Well, you'd like another Brady.
Do I have a motion for approval for the memorandum of agreement with ECTC for dual credit?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval for the memorandum of agreement with ECTC for dual credit, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the travel authorization.
So, information about different travel requests are in your board pocket. Certainly, if you have any questions about those, please ask, and if not, just need a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments, discussion on the travel authorization?
I ask it every time. The one going to Georgia, Marietta?
Bus.
Is that by bus, our bus, or...
Mr. Bowling, the question was about the trip going to Georgia. Do we know the mode of transportation on that?
Is that the one that says either or?
Yeah.
Okay, so, it is going to be bus, I believe. I don't have the form in front of me, but it was approved, we did get approval for Chicago just yesterday. Mr. Pickett messaged me on that, and it is going to be Chicago and not Georgia. At the time that they submitted the form, we knew it was going to be one or the other, but we were not sure when we were going to receive a confirmation that this is Science Olympia, correct?
Uh-huh.
And it's through Ms. Watson, and that's Chicago, so... Does anybody have a form? I don't have a form.
It's got school bus checked on here.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I thought it was, but I just couldn't tell you for sure, because I don't have the paper in my hand, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, and I think they were excited that it was in Chicago. I think that was their preferred trip, I believe, and they were hoping to get Chicago, but if that didn't work, they were going to go to Georgia.
Okay. That should be a little less travel, right?
Should be, yes. A little bit.
Okay. So, do I have a motion for approval for the travel authorizations?
Some move.
Oh, wait a minute. We already did that, didn't we? No? A loss. Okay, so, we're ready for a vote. Y'all gotta keep me on. All those in favor of approval for the travel authorization, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the personnel resignation and retirement.
Again, this information, personnel information, is in your board pocket.
Okay. And then, the site-based council meeting minutes are in our packet as well for your review. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, state aye.
One other thing. Andy mentioned it. There was a land question. Has that ever been resolved over here on Kimball Avenue? They wanted to...
I will have some information to share with you. That'll be a future conversation, but it has not been finally resolved, no, sir, not yet.
Question?
Not yet.
Anything else before we adjourn? All those in favor of adjournment? Did I get a first and second? Ma'am?
Yes.
I start to lose it about this time. All right. All those in favor of adjournment, state aye. All those opposed?
That used to happen in these two quarters. Four, five items.
I don't know. It's like nobody knows where we go on that.
Skip items and get them out of place. Thank you for making me feel good.